Courtney.
All right, so good evening, everyone. This is the Needham Board of Zoning Appeals meeting by Zoom pursuant to the emergency authority granted by the governor. Be patient with us. We've done this three or four times. We're getting better at it, but we have Daphne and Clay Hutchinson here to help us with technical problems. We'll, we'll get to everyone eventually, even though sometimes it's a little slow in this format. And also, as I've said before, if by any reason we lose internet or technical problems keep us from going forward, all matters are continued to the next meeting of the zoning board in August. So let me start by calling the role of the board and let them identify themselves. Mr. Tamkin?
I am present.
Mr. Friedenberg?
I'm here.
And Ms. Bararty?
I'm here.
All right, so we're missing Mr. Goldman tonight, and my plan, if it's all right, is to ask Ms. Bararty to vote on the first two matters, and then to ask Mr. Friedenberg to vote on the pool and racket, which is the third matter. All right, so the first thing we need to deal with are the minutes of the last meeting, unless there is a proposed amendment on entertaining a motion to approve them.
Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the first matter is 123 Pickering Street. Jay Durenzo Property LLC applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit amendment under sections 1.4, 7.4, 3.2, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to modify a condition of the special permit to allow the installation of a six-foot white vinyl fences along the boundary line, starting at the beginning of the house located at 117 Pickering Street and extending to the rear boundary line. The fence will be no closer than 10 feet from the house at 117 Pickering Street and the properties located in the single residence B district. Mr. Junta, some of this seems a little confusing, but.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Junta Jr. appearing on behalf of Jay Durenzo. And it's actually relatively straightforward. So the board approved the demolition and reconstruction of the lawful pre-existing two-family at 123 Pickering. That decision was issued April, I'm sorry, June 5th duly filed with the town clerk. And in the decision, there's a condition that requires Durenzo to plant tall green plantings along the south property boundary for a distance of 30 feet from the sidewalk. The south property boundary is the boundary with the Cliffords at, I think it's 117 Pickering. And on April 30th, Durenzo entered into an agreement with the Cliffords that rather than a tall green plantings, that he would install a six-foot tall vinyl fence, starting basically at the, at the front of the Clifford's house, you know, basically if you extend the front line of the Clifford's house over to the property line, starting at that point, and then continuing back all the way to the rear property line. So I've submitted a copy of that agreement to the board, and basically we're asking that in place of the existing first condition in the decision, that the language from the agreement be substituted instead.
Isn't, isn't it the first two conditions? The one is the green plantings and two is a fence along the remainder?
Well, but so we're, so there's supposed to be a fence along the remainder in any event? So, yeah, it's really, the, the first one is the one that's problematic, but, but they're both sort of subsumed within. You could replace them both.
Okay, so we, we're agreed it's a six-foot fence, and it starts at the front of their house to the rear of the property?
Start, right, it starts at the front of their house and it runs all the way along the property line to the rear.
So, so what's this business about 10 feet? I take it it's going on the property line?
So, right, exactly. It's going on the property line. The 10 feet is the Cliffords. They believe that their house is at least 10 feet from the property line as required by the bylaw, and that's where that language came from. So the, the, basically, it's, I, I think, I can't speak to specifically what the Cliffords were intending, other than I think their point was that it would be on Durenzo's property and not in any way on their property.
All right, are there any questions from the board? Anybody from the public here on this?
Um, hold on for a second.
Daphne, is there anyone from the public?
We have 14 people from the public, but I see no hands raised. Oh, yes, I do. Tell me, Lauren O'Neal and Patrice O'Neal are raised, so I am going to promote them in.
Please bring them in.
I am bringing them in. They are in. Patrice and Jerry are in as panelists.
And they're muted.
And the O'Neals as well.
Are we unmuted at this point?
Yes.
Okay, we just wanted to explain the 10 feet. We have Patrice and Jerry Clifford. We had a survey done both when we bought our property and partway through our 27 years of residence there, and the survey done by Jay Durenzo's vendor has, differs from ours by eight to 10 inches, which puts it closer to the house than the 10 feet border. And so that's why we requested to make sure that at all points, including that particular point, the fence is a minimum of 10 feet from the house.
We're on a Zoom meeting. Wait a minute.
Hello?
Okay, I think I got it.
You got that? Okay.
Mr. O'Neal? Someone needs to unmute Mr. O'Neal.
This is Joe O'Neal at 127 Pickering.
Yes, do you have any problem with what they want to do over on the Clifford side?
No, no, I have a question for the attorney, though, that nothing has been said about what's going to be done on the other side of the property. And I wondered what, what that was all about. It was all about the 117 side and nothing about the 127 side. And we are about 10 feet from the property, from the Durenzo property line, so I was just curious why it was one-sided.
Literally. Is, is there an agreement to install a fence on your side?
Yes, there was, way back.
Isn't that what condition number two says to the decision, John?
Are they the south side?
They're the north side.
I'm sorry, I can't understand what you're saying.
I'm assuming if the Cliffords are the south, these folks are the north, and the condition two is install a six-to-seven-foot-tall solid fence along the remainder of the south boundary and along the north boundary?
Along.
The north boundary. Isn't that?
Along the 127 side.
I, I would assume if they're south, you're north, yeah.
Assume that they're what?
If they're south, I assume you're north.
Oh, correct, correct. But where is that mentioned?
It's in the decision.
It's in the decision.
The original decision from Jim.
Joe O'Neal, I will be happy to send you a copy of the, the special permit.
Okay, so that is part of the decision, the north side?
Yes, they'll install, by the way, can we clarify this, rather than saying six to seven is six feet, okay? So we don't have an argument about that? Is a six-foot fence, okay?
Yes, yes, that's okay.
Okay, so.
And again, I didn't hear that north side at all.
Well, that's not being changed. It was in the original decision, and it will remain, that there'll be a fence along your side.
Okay.
The only change has to do with the Clifford side.
Okay.
So, so based upon Peter's reading of number two, I think the earlier statement is incorrect. I think two really stays the same, and you're just replacing that first portion of the south side with plantings to a fence. Is that correct, George?
So, well, the first condition changes entirely, and then I would say the second condition, it should be changed to now a six-foot fence, and just say along the north boundary and take out the reference to the south boundary.
No.
Could you, could you run that by me again?
Aren't you having a fence on both sides of the property?
Yes, but the, the way the condition reads now, it talks about, well, it specifies 30 feet, and it's supposed to be at the front of the Clifford's house, and.
So, so here's.
That's 30 feet or not.
Here's my suggestion. You delete number one, and number two is install a six-foot fence on both the south and the north sides from front to back.
No, no, because they don't want it all the way to the front of the property. On the Clifford side, they want it to start parallel with their house.
Got it.
We're happy to.
And that's what, and that's what we want on the north side. Stop with the parallel with the house.
Right.
No.
Not starting at the front corner of the homes, going to the back property line. That's how we interpret it.
Not going to the sidewalk, but to stop at the front corner.
Right, Joe. Starting at the front corner, going all the way back.
All right, so Mr. Tamkin, you think you can muster a motion here?
Uh, questioning, I'm questioning. So we're gonna delete condition, well, it's a motion to amend the special permit dated June 5, I think?
Yes.
2020 by amending it and deleting condition one of the decision addressing planting of tall green plantings on the south property boundary for a distance of 30 feet, and amending condition two, which will now be condition one, to install a six-foot tall solid fence along both the south and north boundaries, beginning at a location adjacent or equal to the beginning of the home, and running to the rear of the property. Is that correct?
I think you got it.
Yes.
So that's my motion.
Mr. and Ms. Bararty, you second that?
I second, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, I hope someone took good notes on that one.
We have the tape.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so case number two. Is everyone?
Garden Street?
Let me just get, get, remove. All right. All right, I think we're ready.
All right, so public notice is hereby given that Catalyst Development LLC applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit under sections 1.4, 7.4, 3.2, and 7.5.3, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw for the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement, and reconstruction of the lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling to a new two-family dwelling. The property is at 249 Garden Street in the single residence B district on the matter of Mr. Junta.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, appearing tonight on behalf of Catalysts with respect to the application for 249 Garden Street, and as indicated, this is an application to demolish and reconstruct an existing lawful pre-existing two-family dwelling. Now, the property is shown as parcel 34 on sheet 51 of the assessor's map. It currently contains 9,385 square feet of area with 73.52 feet of frontage on Garden Street. As a result, it's a non-conforming lot. However, the lot was created effectively as of 1914, therefore predates the bylaw and is a non-conforming pre-existing lot. The existing two-family dwelling on the lot is two and a half stories with a stone foundation. It's non-conforming as to both the front yard setback and the side yard setback. There's actually, by the way, a typo in the memo I submitted. I think I called that out as the left. It's the right side that's non-conforming. The front is currently 17 and a half feet from Garden Street as opposed to the required 20 feet, and the right side is 6.2 feet instead of the required 14 feet. From the assessors, the, the house was built in 1900, although it's probably a fair guess that it might have been built before that. So as usual, we start off looking at the valuation lists at the assessor department, and in 1925, there was a Hattie E. Lord who was the owner of the property at that time. She owned the property effectively as of 1914. She was, is listed as owning a house at 43 Garden Street, and that was the original number for this property. Now, unfortunately, the valuation list just describes it as a house. It doesn't specify that it's a two-family, so it calls into question, you know, what the actual use was. So we go and we look at the poll tax. Now, in 1925, the poll tax only shows, it actually only shows Charles A. Lord, who was Hattie's husband. Doesn't even show Hattie living at the property. But then in the following year, in 1926, the poll tax clearly shows two families living at the property. So it's a fair inference just from that, that in 1925, there were two families there. But in addition, I looked at the 1910 federal census. I also looked at the 1920 census, but for some bizarre quirk, this house does not appear to show up in the 1920 census. I found the houses right next door to it, but I could find no entry for this house. So it could be that the, the, the people who were taking the census, maybe, you know, maybe they couldn't find anybody home. I don't know, but it wasn't in the 1920, but it definitely was in the 1910 census. And in the 1910 census, it shows that Charles A. Lord and his wife Hattie were living at the property, along with Charles's aunt, his mother-in-law, and then also an older gentleman and his son. And the older gentleman and his son are listed in the 1910 census as boarders, which is the old term for tenant. So it appears that in 1910, it was used as a two-family. So between the 1910 federal census listing and the 1926 poll tax, it certainly appears that it was a two-family in 1925 when zoning it into effect. And then going forward is a clear record of the property being used and maintained as a two-family. So we look at sort of the next data point that we look at is the assessor's field card, the cards having been created generally in the 1940s. Now, that card show or lists the property on the backside as a two-family, and then on the front side, it also describes it as a two-family, and the category for apartments is checked. The front side of that card also indicates that there were two hot water heating systems, which presumably you would not have unless it was in fact a two-family. Then there are a, then the next sort of data point is from 1957. On the building department field card, the old index cards that they have, there's an entry for two permits, really two, four permits, two, two for one, two for one thing and two for the other. So the first two permits from 1957 were for the installation of two hot water heaters in apartments one and two, and then the second set of permits was for the installation of burners. So those permits seem to indicate that in 1957, there were two units at the property. Then in the building department, we've got a series of permits and applications running from 1983 through 2013, which all reference or describe the property as a two-family. The property is currently assessed as a two-family, and the poll tax and street lists from 1926 all the way through 1983, basically, I, you know, that's sort of the key, because we've got the billing permits after that. So for that time period, there is continuous two-family use with the exception of one gap in 1944 and 1945, where there's two years that appear to show one of the units vacant. But interestingly enough, 1944 is, is the year or the year after Hattie Lord died. She was living at the property. She passed away, and then the following year, her daughter ended up selling the property. So you can clearly see that the gap is because the tenant died, and then they were getting the orders to get the affairs in order, and then they sold the property. In any event, that, at that time period, both the state statute and zoning did not impose an automatic abandonment for non-use. It was you had to actually abandon. So the fact that a unit may have been vacant for that period does not void the, the use of it as a two-family. And then sort of more, more interestingly, in 1999, I think it was, there was a ZBA decision with respect to the property. The then-owner, David Klebenoff, sought permission to put a porch on top of the existing porch on the right-hand side of the property. Because that porch was already non-conforming as the setback, he had to get approval from the Board of Appeals. While the two-family use was not really the subject of that hearing, the board did reference in its decision that it was a two-family house. So the board recognized that in 1999. And then lastly, you have two letters that, well, a notarized letter from the current owners, an affidavit from Mr. Klebenoff that came in yesterday, both of which indicate that the property was used basically from 1995 to present as a two-family. And then today, we also received a notarized letter from a neighbor that indicated that since 1961, to their belief, it was a two-family. I don't know if the board has all seen that. That just came in this afternoon, so I don't know if everybody's had that and had a chance to review it. So.
No, we, we have not.
Okay.
I'll take your word for it.
Right. So with all that, you know, it, the, the fact that it was used continuously as a two-family from, you know, definitely from 1926 all the way through, and we've got this reference in 1910 of it really being a two-family, this would appear to meet the requirement to show that this is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family. So now with respect to the proposed replacement dwelling, the repro, proposed replacement dwelling is a two-family.
Yeah, well, why don't we stop here and just see if there are questions about the two-family status?
Okay.
So is there anyone on the board that has a question or a problem?
Did George provide that stuff?
Yes.
Yes, his email. Over from Daphne.
And I did receive them, and I was able to capture it as the record to the file.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, just all of the poll tax and assessor's cards and everything. I don't remember seeing any of that, as long as that's in the file.
It, it, it's, it's attached to his memorandum. Certainly, the assessor's cards, when you, when you go through the poll tax records, there are some years where there's only one, but I think back at that time, there was not a absolute rule that if it's vacant for two years, then you're presumed to lose your status. It was a question of intent, and, you know, who knows? It's hard to fill in the blanks back in those many years.
Right, okay. No, I just wanted to make sure we had it.
And then there's also only one period where it's a two-year gap. There are a few gaps where it's a year here, a year there, but there's only one sequential two-year gap where it's, where appears, one of the units appears vacant.
But Ms. Bararty seems to be ready to ask something, no?
No, no, I'm good.
No, no. All right, so Daphne, is there anyone here from the public on this matter?
We see.
We'll see if anyone wants to weigh in.
There are no hands raised on this issue. But we have quite a few attendees.
Okay, all right, so let's go on and talk about what you want to build.
All right, so if I can, I'd like to share screen and show you the plans. Looks like we have a technical issue. I'm not able to do that now.
I think we, we all do kind of have the plans.
Yep, all right, so I apologize. I put them up like I would normally do, but I upgraded my computer last week, the software, and I thought everything was working fine, but apparently share screen is one piece that's broken. So in any event, so if you have the plans, it's basically a two-family where it's a unit on either side, and rather than having the garages attached, there are two single-car garages detached in the rear of the property. The proposed replacement house meets all the requirements of the bylaw with respect to density and setbacks and such. So in particular, meets all the setbacks. There's a footprint of 1,800 square feet, a lot coverage of 19.2%, and the garages are 563 square feet. So, under the bylaw, under 1474, in the demolition and reconstruction of a two-family, for a non-conforming lot, 1,800 square feet is the, is the cap, is the maximum for the footprint for the replacement house. So this is right at the cap, but it does meet the requirement. As a part of that provision, a part of that section, you're also allowed to accept out 575 square feet of garage space. And as I indicated, this is 563, so it's within the allowed 575 square feet. Under section 4.3 of the bylaw, I think it is, or 4.2, there is an applicable 25% lot coverage at 19.2%. This obviously meets that requirement, so it meets all the dimensional and density requirements of the bylaw. It also meets the height requirement, and therefore is approvable. With respect to its sort of fit with the neighborhood, there is a substantial two-family located to the left. There's a decent-sized house located to the right. This property is directly across from a commercial district, and in fact, it's across from the parking lot for the Needham Bank and in the area of substantial commercial buildings. And then two doors down, you have the 40B project that sort of transformed what was a single house into, I think it was six total units. So we feel that the size, design, and scope of the replacement house is in keeping with the neighborhood as it's been redeveloped and will fit nicely with what's been going on there.
Okay, let me go through the comments we have from town officials. The planning board had no comment. The fire department has no issue. The police has no issue. The town engineer, you know, points out you have to comply with the stormwater requirements, and I think we'll probably make our decision conditioned upon stormwater satisfactory to them. The health department points out you need a demolition permit and the stuff that deals with demolition. And the only one that's a little bit confusing is the building inspector thinks there's an 18% lot coverage requirement. I guess I spent some time trying to read the bylaw, and I think he, he doesn't make many mistakes, but I, I don't think there is one in 1.4, 7.4, because I think you're proceeding under A, which is you're on a non-conforming lot and a building with a footprint not greater than 1,800 feet, a square feet. If, if, if you went down and were proceeding under C, then there is an 18% lot coverage. But I, I think you're probably right. It's only the general lot coverage of 25% that applies. Is anyone on the board reading it differently or considered it?
We, we actually, if you recall, we had this same exact issue come up on 264 Webster, I think it was, and, and it was the same, the building inspector thought at first that it was an 18% limit, and then subsequently, I think he might have changed it on that one. But I think, yeah, I think because conforming lots, it's limited to 18%, and on a 10,000 square feet lot, that would result in 1,800 square feet. So you can see sort of the rationale is that 1,800 square feet is sort of the, the minimum, the minimum maximum that you can have. And then if you have a larger lot, you can go above that, but basically for 10,000 square feet or less, then you can't, 1,800 square feet is your cap.
And there's no lot coverage test here in 1.474, I think?
Well, the 1,800 square feet, but there's no percentage.
Right, yeah, right. Right. All right, so do we conclude we have no one from the public? Yes, Daphne, no one from the public?
We do have a member from the public, and I just, Seth Schulman, he had his hand raised, and I promoted him as a panelist.
I'm sorry, are we talking about the Needham Pool Club now?
No.
All right, I will send you back. All right. All right.
There were, I believe, was there any residents supporting or opposed? I read a few letters that came in today.
I'm sorry, yeah, but I don't think anyone was opposed. I mean, they were really, there was, there was a letter from, I believe, a neighbor saying that it's a two-family house, and expressed no opposition.
John, we have a, we have a Lynn Claflin, who has her hand raised from the public. Lynn, we promoted you as a panelist.
Are you there, Lynn?
Looks like she's still muted.
Unmute.
Hit unmute her.
Are you catching me yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, we're neighbors. We're, there's one house in between us and Limas's. I had friends in that house that was a two-family house the whole time I was growing up, and it's been continuous through my adulthood, and my mom's been there continuously since And as I said in my letter that you referred to, that there's a bigger impact by the condos that were put in to our north, and it just doesn't seem very fair to deny Limas his two-family structure that's always been a two-family. So, no.
If I may say, the current, the current one is pretty rundown, so I would think this is an upgrade to the neighborhood to have a new one.
Um, well, it could be renovated. I mean, it's a beautiful town. I have many fond memories of running through it, so, but yes, it has run down in the subsequent years. But I, basically, what I wanted to say is that my mom and I have no opposition in this, and want to support him in his endeavors, and yes, if it increases the value of the street, all for it.
Thank you. Anyone else, Daphne, on this?
No, there are no more, there are no hands raised on this issue.
Okay, so, Mr. Tien, can you hear the motion guy tonight?
Well, I think we want to close the hearing and liberate a little bit.
Closing it and ready for motion, I think.
All right, I just wanted to sort of discuss it first. I think everybody, at least I'm convinced, that they met the standard of the continuous use as the two-family. I think that's a standard, and we should make that finding. And then, the second component to it, it's very hard in this format to actually look at the plans and renderings. It would have been better if the system worked. I'm sort of rotating it on my large screen here, looking at them. So, to the developer, I think you've done a nice job, from what I can see, and hopefully, it's constructed in the same way, but it looks pretty good. It's just a difficult format to see, you know, you look, turning around and looking at it, but, so, on that basis, that I'm supportive of the project.
Anyone else on the Board? Want to discuss it? No, so I think we're ready for the motion.
At that point, I'll be the motion guy. I thought we should discuss it a little bit. I'd make a motion to...
We could always discuss after there's a motion on the floor.
You usually gavel these things very quickly, Mr. Chairman, but anyway, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit to allow for the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement, and reconstruction of the lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling to a two, new two-family dwelling as depicted in the plans and rendering as submitted with the application located at, for the property at 249 Garden Street, as subject to all typical conditions of a special permit for a two-family, including compliance and approval of the town's, what is the Department of Public Works?
Stormwater.
Stormwater. And I think that would be the only condition, so that would be my motion.
Second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, we ready for number three?
All right. Let me just remove. All right, one second.
So you're bringing in those people?
Yes, I'm bringing, Chris, all right, they're all...
All right, let me read the notice. Public notice is hereby given to the Needham Pool and Racket Club, Inc. Applicant has made application of the Board of Appeals for special permit amendment under sections 3.2.1, 4.1.6.3, 5.1, 7.5.3, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the construction of three paddle tennis courts, warming hut, a viewing stand, fencing and lighting, in operation of the same from October to May. The property is located at 1545 Central Avenue in the single resident A District. And I think, I think that's it, even though there's something in here about Oakhurst Circle? Is that part of this notice?
That was just a typo, John.
I think so, okay. So I think it's, the whole property is located in the single residence A District. All right, Mr. Crowe, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to be back. Thank you, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Michael Crowe, Attorney in Needham, Massachusetts, representing the applicant, who is the Needham Pool and Racket Club Incorporated, which is a not-for-profit Massachusetts corporation. They're the owner of the property at 1545 Central Avenue, and they are in existence pursuant to a special permit issued by this Board back in 1962, which allowed a private, not-for-profit club to operate swimming pools, tennis courts, and accessory structures, and that's what's been operated there since, since 1962. So currently, there are some pools, there are 12 tennis courts, and there is a clubhouse. What the applicant is asking to do today is to drop in the middle of the area where the tennis courts are currently situated, three what are called paddle tennis courts, or platform tennis courts, which is a popular new method of tennis sport, I guess you would call it. They're popping up everywhere, including the, I believe, the Dead and Poor Racket Club has one, I believe the Wells and Country Club has added this. It's a very popular sport, and it's played, whether or not during the cold winter months, and oftentimes in the evening after hours by working adults. There are also leagues involved to some degree, and Barry Nectow, who was a prior president of the Needham Pool and Racket Club and current manager of the nonprofit setup to get this off the ground and run, I will give you a full description of what it all entails in terms of the sport itself, membership, and the type of play and activity. But basically, the proposed changes are to add three 20-by-44 paddle courts with lighting, a warming hut, and some minor viewing stands, aluminum viewing stands, between the hut and the fencing for the platform. They will be lit by 18, approximately 20-foot-high lights that meet the illumination guidelines of the Needham Illumination Bylaw. We have an expert tonight that will discuss that. There are photos that hopefully came through, which show the, quote, spillage, I guess they call it, which should be contained within the lot and will be contained within the lot, and a matter of fact, is pretty much contained just outside of where the hut is located. And again, we'll have an expert that will talk about the illumination and all those wonderful things. The swimming, the activities that the special permit allowed in '62, as I said, were swimming, diving, waiting pools, tennis courts, and related and similar activities. So it can be argued that paddle tennis is already an approved use within those guidelines, but yet, obviously, we have to have them built, we have to have a small structure to keep the warming hut on, and that's why we're here today, to amend that special permit and asking for amendment. Basically, the only two things that we would need to amend are the two conditions, are this is a night sport, and it would be run during the off-season of the club itself, so when the swimming and the tennis operations are shut down, this would be run, and they want to have hours of 8:00 to 11:00, seven days a week. The current restriction is that lights go off at 9:00 for the swimming operation. So they would need permission to have this air, have it run until 9:00. And again, it would be run from, only run during the off-season for the club, so. The parking situation right now is there are 80 parking spots with some, you know, the accessible parking spaces there as well. The paddle tennis use will, according to the people that are going to be using, and Barry will, again, testify, the most extensive use would be when they have their league play, which is three nights a week. The most that could possibly be, there would be 36 players. There are 80 parking spots. We've talked to the building inspector, the building inspector's gone out and reviewed. I told him my opinion, that because this is run off-season, and clearly, 80 parking spots is more than enough for this use. For instance, the tennis courts themselves, the parking use for each tennis court is only four for tennis court. The most, we have three new courts coming in, if you classify them as tennis. He, as I said, agreed that we don't need to do a full parking analysis, as long as the use is conditioned to be during the off-season for the club, and he asked us to restrike the parking lot and put better signage up regarding the accessible spaces, and to remove one partition, which is a smaller chain across the part of the driveway, which we've agreed to do, and can all be conditions of the special permit amendment if approved. And again, the lighting, I'm going to let the expert talk about that, but it is designed so that there will be, meet the requirement of zero spillage from the site, and should not, should not cause any problems of illumination, and nor is the, under the town bylaw, you're not allowed to have any spillage anyways. We'll get into that, but obviously, that's a big issue with the abutters, and our expert will explain what this all means. Conservation Department had a few concerns, all of which we can address, and our engineer, Brandon Carr, is here tonight with their questions on that. But basically, he's established, and he's worked, deciding to work with the Board of Health to establish that we're nowhere near the buffer zones, and he has already clear, you know, what, he asked, excuse me, he has, but has not approved, has not been approved by the Board of Conservation Board yet, where the exactly the wetland delineation is on the site, but that's all in the works, and that will all be taken care of. We don't anticipate any problem with conservation, and of course, anything that we need to do will be done to make conservation happy. The same is true with the Board of Health. The Board of Health was concerned that we may be adding to the old septic system there. We are not going to add to the old septic system. What we are designing, are planning on, and in the early stages of finding what works best, is a self-contained Title V approved composting system that would be inside the hut and be used, you know, to keep people, so people would have a place to go to the bathroom, and some of the neighbors are concerned that people would be used in the woods at night, and that won't be the case. There will be a bathroom, that will be approved by the Board of Health. And the Board of Health, all the other issue was, there are certain setbacks that have to be in place between any structures and the, any septic components, and again, our engineer is confident that we're nowhere near any of those, and he'll put them on the map and on the site plan to prove it, and so we're not worried about that. So basically, we're requesting two, two changes, which was to add the paddle tennis use and to allow the change from 8:00 in the morning to 11:00, seven days a week, from October through May. The proposed addition of the paddle tennis to existing Pool and Racket Club is a natural extension of the allowed activities at the site. The use is consistent with the intent of the original special permit, and is in harmony with the uses already allowed. The new use has been designed to fit within the natural habitat of the site, buffered by trees and distance from residents, with appropriate measures taken to control illumination noise and without creating additional undue traffic in the area. The new use will not be detrimental interest to the neighborhood. As the 1962 zoning board stated, that they are of the opinion the town is fortunate having spotted throughout the entire area such facilities as playgrounds, golf course, Rosemary Beach, the existing tennis club, Memorial Park, cricket field, et cetera. Actually, all in areas more congested than the area in question here. Allowing this use would be just a natural extension of what the Board describes as an integral part of community living. I know there are issues that the abutters are going to raise, the usual ones, and we'll get to address those at the end after the abutters have to say, including, I'm sure the noise, the value of a decrease in value, and traffic and lights are all going to be, you know, the common issues that we're going to address. But I think at this point, unless the Board thinks otherwise, I'd like to move on to Mr. Nectow, who is the manager of the new entity. Let him describe how this is going to go, or what it means on a daily basis, what the activity we like at the club. Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine, and maybe he'd explain the relationship between this new entity and the existing Pool and Racket Club entity.
I would like you to do that first.
Well, just go ahead and just cover it whenever you want.
Sure, you bet, and thanks very much for having us. We're really excited about the project, and I'm a former president of Pool and Racket, and during my presidency, we began this project, which is a couple of years ago, and our idea, many of us that are, that are club members, are also paddle players, and we've become paddle players over the last five to 10 years. Most of us belong to a small club up in Brookline that's actually on the campus of Pine Manor. They have a very similar setup that we're proposing here. So paddle tennis, it's played in the winter, outdoors, as Mr. Crowe said, mostly at night by working folks like us, men and women. It plays much like tennis over a net, although it plays a bit like squash, where you can use the, in this case, screens or walls. It's a very active league in greater Boston for men and women. It plays evenings, after, after working folks, the league matches typically start at 6:00 and go into 10:00 to 11:00 at night, and it's a couple nights a week. We've been all through our property, trying to site our court and hut strategically to be out of the way of neighbors, and also fit in with the character of Pool and Racket. Pool and Racket's been there since 1962, and a lot of the folks that are members were members as kids, and we really didn't want to change the character. And one of the really nice things about this paddle facility is that it operates when the Pool and the Racket don't operate. So Pool and Racket basically operates from Memorial Day to Labor Day, roughly. So paddles are a fall/winter sport, doesn't really get started up until kind of October-ish, mid-October, and it goes through kind of April-ish, when the weather starts to warm up, and those of us that play paddle will move outside and play tennis. The nice thing about this is, in addition to Pool and Racket, is there's many members at Pool and Racket that are, that are members, that would like to be members of the, of the paddle club. And we structured the entity to be a separate entity from Pool and Racket, and basically have a lease-type relationship, so the paddle entity would lease the ground from the Pool and Racket and pay some form of rent. of rent over to Pool and Racket. So two separate entities, two separate memberships. The membership for the paddle entity would be, at its maximum, a hundred and fifty either individuals or families. We expect to get there in about three years, at the most, I hope. And again, solely separate from the, from the Pool and Racket facility. I probably missed a few things along the way, and, you know, happy to answer any questions on the, on the sport, facility, or anything else.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I've looked at all the materials and what you submitted, Michael, and the plans. I don't actually see anything really depicting how the game looks and the court, and the raised court, and how you would use the walls or the screens. You said Pine Manor has something very similar?
Yes, I'm actually a member there. But if you want to see something closer by, if you go up Forest Street, by Valente, go up Forest Street, and sort of get to that, the stop sign by Babson, and if you kind of look over your right shoulder, you'll look right at the Wellesley Country Club's four-court facility. That's probably the closest and easiest one to see. Ours won't be like the Wellesley Country Club facility, but the courts will be the same, and the screens will be the same, but the setup will be a little different.
John, if I, if I can do this, I think I have a picture. Barry, do you have the photo, the drone photo?
I do.
That you can share. I may be able to share that. I can try.
Oh, the drone photo, that came in late today?
Yes.
Yes.
Not, not late. I think yesterday, maybe.
Yes, it came in yesterday, right. I may be able to share that.
Michael wouldn't be late. I understand that.
No, it wasn't my fault. Nothing's my fault. If I hit share screen, am I able to pull that up?
I have it online. I picked it up on my computer.
Yeah, okay. That's a drone photo of a nighttime picture of what this will look like. It's not this, obviously, we haven't built it yet, but that's the same company that built, is going to build ours, is a similar facility, if that helps.
Now, how high is it raised off that? Is that decking all around, and that the deckings raised, is that what it is?
Yes, I'm going to, next, we have the manufacturer who does this around the country, who can give you more detail on how these things are built and what materials, and they are raised, and it says, he's best to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you.
And so who's next?
The other question's prepared. Next, I'd like to have Chris. Chris, you here?
You have to unmute, Chris.
Chris?
Daphne, can you unmute him? Yeah, I can still, I can still see a sign that you're muted.
Daphne's muted, too.
Yeah, but I've been trying to, I've been notifying Chris to unmute.
He may have to unmute at his terminal.
Yeah, I'm not able to unmute him.
I'm going to send him a text.
Well, I think he can hear us.
I wonder if he knows that the lower left-hand corner of your screen, Mr. Cuskeyari, because your unmute button is at the lower left-hand corner.
I also think he's on two different.
He might be trying to come in.
Part of the problem is that there's two listings for him here.
That generally blocks the audio. He's on by a telephone, and he's on.
Yeah, you need just one.
Maybe you can disconnect your phone, or just talk on the phone. Maybe that's the way to do it.
Want to move on to one of the other experts while we're waiting for Kristin?
Yeah, sure. Maybe you can work on it. At the bottom left of the screen, he should have an audio button where he can unmute. But let's move on, and we'll come back to him.
Yeah. Brandon, are you there?
Yep, I'm here, Michael.
How you doing, Brandon? Brandon is from Dupree Engineering. You want to describe the layout and the issues from your standpoint?
Sure, yeah. Good evening, Brandon Carr with Dupree Engineering. We did the site design and survey on the project. So, you know, Michael also mentioned a couple of comments from Conservation and Board of Health, so I'll address those as well. I'm sure you all have the plans in front of you, but the survey is shown on kind of sheet two of our plan set. We did a complete survey of the site. That gives a good overview of the site layout as it is. You've got Central Lab on the right side of the plan, and then the clubhouse and pool is located in the back of the site, so that's on the left side of the plan there. And you can see those four kind of square boxes that are the different courts. So there's, there's four sets of courts, kind of shaped in a U shape in the center of the site. And if you go to sheet three of our plan set, it kind of gives an overview with the proposed improvements. So you can see we're tucking the three pickleball courts and hut, warming hut, kind of in between the U of the, of the existing courts. So it's tucked into a brushy wooded area. That area would be cleared off and leveled. It's currently graded pretty much existing as a depression, so we're kind of keeping that same grading to capture the stormwater, because if you can imagine, these are raised courts, and hopefully, if Chris can get on, he can explain it a little bit better. It's, um, the decking material, sure.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, but.
Yes.
Yes, but we got Brandon talking, and we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Can you guys still hear me? I just, my screen just went black for a second. Oh, there we go. All right. So we tucked the three courts kind of in the center there, and from a stormwater perspective, if you, if you look at these courts there, wood deck, so it's, it's pretty typical to a raised deck that you would, you know, sit at at your house, or, you know, it's got, so it's got gaps in between the boards that allow the rainwater to go through the court and into what we're creating is a stone depression underneath the court that's sized to infiltrate the rainfall into the ground, to kind of mimic the existing additions that are out there. On the north, the top of the plan, east of the facility, you'll see the wetland that kind of the Conservation Commission had questions on. So we delineated that wetland in two thousand and sixteen, when we did the site survey. And to be within the conservation jurisdiction, you have to be within the hundred foot of the wetland, or two hundred foot of a stream. And the area work is about a hundred and fifty feet outside the wetland. So we're outside the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and we just need to, they had some questions on when that edge was delineated, so we just need to provide them with that information, which we've already followed up with them. The Board of Health had a question on the existing septic system, and if we were tying into that, which we're not proposing to tie into it, we're proposing self-contained, they're called composting toilets, inside the warming hut. And basically, with those, Mass D E P has a list of manufacturers and models that are approved by Mass D E P, so we'll be selecting one from that model. And we won't be tying into the septic system, and the existing septic system is located near the Racket Club building, which is, septic system's about four hundred and fifty feet away from where we're proposing this work. So the site work to accommodate the courts is fairly minimal, just because it is, it's a raised deck system. So obviously, the area has to be cleared, stumped, and allowed for the foundations and the footings for the different support structures to be put in. A couple of the pathways around the area need to be rerouted and just regrade, minor regrading, no more than, you know, two to three feet, and cuts and fills we're talking about. It's, it's pretty much staying at existing grade and building this court over in a platform, and then adding the building in. We supplied also, just for reference, an exhibit showing, you know, the location of this court. When we first were approached by the Racket Club itself, they had already done a lot of work on where they wanted to site this in the, in the site, to kind of minimize the disturbance, any potential disturbance. So it is interior to the site. The lighting plan shows that no lighting trespass is passed. I believe it's pretty much any of the existing courts, so it doesn't even get to the, near the property line. It's all self-contained in there. And we're about four hundred and fifty feet to five hundred feet away from the closest residential houses to the, the east, and then the ones on Central Lab, the cul-de-sac to the east, and then the ones on Central Lab to the west of, west, the west, the cul-de-sac to the west, and then to the east of the site, a couple houses on Central Lab. But other than that, from the site civil standpoint, it's pretty straightforward. Do you have any questions you can ask now, or we can let Chris talk about kind of the construction of the courts themselves?
We'll find a credit. Okay, sorry about that glitch before. Can you guys hear me okay now?
Yes, great.
Okay, great. So platform tennis courts are made out of aluminum. They started off being wood in the sixties. They were raised off the ground, so you could shovel snow off of them. It's primarily a winter sport, and the material was slowly migrated to aluminum, and the courts are heated. So they remain elevated off the ground to the degree that you want to heat underneath so that you can have the courts as dry and usable as possible. In this particular location, the courts are going to be about a foot off grade at the hut end, and slowly tapering down the hill. So the components are all aluminum. The decking that's around the courts are also aluminum, and then the hut is a typically framed, frame structure. There, the, the courts are enclosed with what we call skirting. It's a texture one-eleven material that helps contain the heat. It also contains sound reverberating from playing, which is minimal to begin with. We talked about a little bit about rainwater running off the edge of the planks and running down straight to the ground. That does happen. We also have a rubber gasket that runs between those cracks, and the, the purpose is twofold. One, it helps to retain the heat, and second, it helps to quiet, quiet the court. So water still travels around that, so it doesn't create any issues with water falling right directly underneath the court. And then the surface is an aggregate surface. It's a combination of an epoxy paint and aluminum oxide that's very similar to sandpaper, so that that creates a non-slip surface in the wintertime, and it also acts to absorb sound. So there really is very minimal noise from like a ball hitting the surface. And in platform tennis, the screens are also part of the game, so there, there's tension on the screens, and people will bounce into them. But there's no noise associated with that because of the tension on the screen. You're not banging into anything, you're bouncing off of something. The, the lights, there are six lights per court. They are twenty feet off the ground. They are directed ninety degrees straight onto the court, and it's an LED fixture that's designed to contain as much of the light on the court itself with as little spill as possible. And the photometrics that we sent, I think it's on the page three, it shows a red border. That's where you, we get to zero-foot candles. It's way within the boundaries of the court, of the property, and it's, the vast, and if you really zoomed in and looked at the photometrics, the vast majority of the spill is achieved way, way within that, that rectangle. And on pages three and four of the photometrics, it gives you kind of a computer-generated idea of the intensity of the light on the court, and how quickly it diminishes is off of the court. And that's one of the reasons that I wanted you to look at that drone picture, you know, because the picture's worth a thousand words. That, that's actually a three-court complex. It's, it's exactly the same layout as what we're proposing for Needham, and so that's like a real-life example of what, you know, people can expect in terms of how the lights concentrated on the court, and how quickly off of the court it diminishes to being basically black. So that's a quick overview.
Thank you. Any questions, Chris? We keep on going?
Yeah, keep on going.
Yeah, all right. The president of the, the current president of the Needham Pool and Racket Club, Kevin Colleen, do you want to add anything? Kevin, are you there? All right. Tony?
I think he needs to be added as a panelist, maybe.
Well, he was on the list.
Definitely, you're on mute, just, we can't hear you, just so you know.
Um, let me see.
Kevin Colleen?
Kevin Colleen, okay, he, he came in as a, as an attendee, so let me just bring him in, and I'm going to promote him as a panelist.
Okay.
All right. There he is.
Kevin?
Yeah, I think I'm coming aboard here.
Great, we can hear you. There you are. Hi, Kevin. This is Kevin Colleen. Let me see. Kevin is a president, current president of the Needham Pool and Racket Club. I didn't know if you wanted to add any, any comments to what we've been saying.
Yeah, just a few words, you know, to just fortify what Barry had said. Barry was the president two years ago, and, you know, has been an avid tennis player in the summer at Needham Pool and Racket Club, and, and actually started to get me interested in the game of paddle, which I hadn't played before. I was very neutral to the sport at first, and have played a couple times at Pine Manor. It's a wonderful activity. It's a wonderful sport. There was this opportunity presented to us from a, from a, from a group that was losing their court, so, so we had this impetus to, to really think about it. And as more people within the board fought long and hard about it, it became a unanimous decision to support Barry in setting up this LLC and private structure. Everything he said was spot on. The NPRC will hold, you know, we will provide a lease to them. There will be, you know, guidelines that they have to follow. And, you know, the only, I just want to convey with the message that, that the board was unanimous in pushing this, pushing this forward and presenting it to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Kevin. Is Tony available? Tony de Blasio? D B Assel, I'm sorry. Daphne, is he listed as one of the?
I see him here. I will go ahead and promote him as a panelist.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question while you're waiting, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So Michael, or Barry, or anybody, I'm looking at the plans. How many tennis courts are you eliminating, and what will you be left with? Or are you not eliminating tennis courts?
They're not eliminating any tennis courts. There's a setting right in between the existing tennis courts. So there still will be twelve tennis courts, which are not used when these are things. Tony, you there?
I am.
Great, hey, this is Tony DBASO. I didn't, I'm sure I said that wrong. Tony's been retained. Tony's been retained as a project manager to oversee all this and has been very helpful in putting this group together. I didn't know, Tony, I know you've been listening. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to this before we turn it over to the the board for questions.
Well, everything's been pretty spot on, everything that's been said so far. I'm the current facilities director over at Deadham Country Club. We have four paddle club paddle courts on site at the facility. It is a great sport for our members. It's really taken hold the last few years and it's really growing in the area. As far as noise and problems, we haven't had any complaints from our neighbors. The location of the courts at this facility is spot on, right in the middle of everything, right in the middle of the current facility. So I don't see, I don't see any problems going forward. You know, Chris mentioned the lighting. Same thing that's spot on. Nothing's going to go past the existing tennis courts, so there won't be any spillers to the area and the neighborhood. And I think, you know, some of the neighbors said they came over to our facility and they hung out and watched different different contests. I mean, they can come any anytime and watch what's going on and they'll see that it's not a rowdy college sport. It's, you know, professionals after work coming out, having a good time and going home afterwards. It's, you know, it's an adult sport. It's not, you know, there is kids clinics, but they're even quieter than the adults. I mean, it's just they're they're learning the sport. It's mostly adult adult sport for professionals after work. It's mostly played at country clubs. There's not a whole lot of these at other facilities. Some tennis facilities have them, but it's mostly country clubs with more affluent people. And it just, it's just a nice fit for this for this facility here.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Chairman, that that in a nutshell is our presentation. We're open for questions. There there are people here who want to speak in favor and I'm sure there are people who want to speak against it.
Yes, yes, but but I'd like to go through the comments from the various town people. I have a couple of questions, maybe one right now. Is there going to be alcohol allowed at this facility?
Barry, you want to address that and Kevin? The current alcohol policy, it's the same policy that exists right now at the club. And Kevin, I'll let you explain what that policy is. But yes, there will be alcohol.
Yeah, so the current policy at Needham Pool and Racket Club is 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 essentially weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and alcohol is contained. We have a tent facility that's attached to the clubhouse between the clubhouse and the pool. I think we got our alcohol permit roughly four or five years ago. There 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 has not been a problem. But this, again, the hours of the of the paddle tennis, which is really operates in tandem, right? The the summer season is at Needham Pool and Racket Club, and this is a fall winter sport. I know the hours are ours will be somewhat different and I I'll I'll leave it to Barry to describe what's being planned for for the paddle tennis.
Thanks. So it's not a liquor license. It's carry-in, carry-out. So we would run it much the same as we do over at at Brookline Paddle, where I'm a member on the campus of Pine Manor. If you're having an event, you bring your food and beverage in at the end of the night, end of the day, whenever it might be. You pack it all up and it all goes out trash and and everything. So it's, there's no service. It's you, you just bring what what you want in and take take it home at the end of the day.
That may be worse from a baseball view, being having someone serve. Okay. It it is, is the new entity a nonprofit also? I mean, it's just a mirror, I take it, of Pool and Racket Club?
Exactly. It is set up, it is a not-for-profit LLC. Mostly was, I think four of the five members are that are running it are are current Needham Pool and Racket Club members or Needham residents.
Right, and I I guess I I just like anyone who can address the noise that would come from this. I mean, I understand the lights. I had more than I ever wanted to hear with the lights on the Fazio field. And, you know, from that exercise, which we continued later. I mean, when people look out there, they'll be able to see a bright lit facility, but there's absolutely no reason why there would be spillover of the light off the property. So I I do understand that, but I don't quite understand the noise that this would create.
Okay, so I'll concur about the lights with one caveat, this is much smaller than like a baseball or football field. The lights are much lower and the three paddle courts in total is contains less square footage than a single tennis court. So it's a much more confined and reduced footprint. The lights are only twenty feet high as opposed to a big stadium. This is also you you have to see through a bunch of woods in order to actually physically see the courts. So that's also going to mitigate any kind of noticing of lights. But yes, there you 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 need to have light on the court in order to play. But I would characterize it, you know, in a lot less than you were describing a field situation. Sound has never been an issue. It's, I I think it's, you you you're not going to hear the ball or the people running on the court or bouncing into the screens. It's it's just it 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 has not come up as an issue. You know, I built six thousand courts, you know, twenty-six states over the last, you know, forty-plus years. And people are concerned about the lights, no real concern about the sound. The other thing is, this is a wintertime sport. And, you know, most everyone is going to be inside their house with their doors closed. Even if we were close to a property line, I, you know, I don't think people would hear it just because of the fact that, you know, they're going to be much more indoors. But that's if there was noise. It really isn't something that generates a lot of noise.
Okay, thanks. All right, so let me run through the comments we have from different town officials. The planning board had no comment. The building inspector, I think you addressed his issues, which are restriping signage for the accessible space. And I don't quite understand, there's something about a chain blocking an entrance. I take it that's temporary or be moved, removed?
It is temporary. It's basically two barrels with a little chain between it. We'll remove that, obviously.
So the the police and fire had no issues. The conservation commission, I think you've addressed, which is you need to get a determination from them that you're not within any their jurisdiction. And then we had some comments from the health department. They were concerned about a septic system. You've addressed that and you know, lighting can't cause a nuisance, which you know, I'm sure we will prohibit there being any light coming off the property and COVID protocols as long as we're in that state. So I think those are those comments. I, we've had written comments in opposition from two neighbors. And I think we probably ought to hear from them if they're here and anyone else in the public who wants to be heard.
While you're selecting those people, I'd like to ask a question to Michael. Do you have any evidence that was it was raised that it's a nonprofit? I did not see anything in the materials showing that it is a nonprofit, either with the Mass AG or the General Revenue Service.
I I did not have that with the memo that I filed that was just attached, the corporate records filed with Secretary of State to describe it as a not-for-profit in the organization for the LLC. Whether they have filed yet to get the to get their nonprofit ID number, I don't know. But if you look at with my memo.
I'm looking at, Mike, I'm looking at the LLC. There's nothing indicating it's nonprofit.
It it is, maybe, let me pull it up here, hold on one second. If you look at the the certificate of organization.
Yep.
If you look at number four.
As a private club, not as.
Right, not conducted as a business, which is what the bylaw requires. If you look at the three point, two point one public semi and institutional uses allowed in the single resident A district by special permit is a private club, not conducted as a business.
So I see it as a private club, but it's not a nonprofit.
That's true. I I I'm using the wrong term. It's a private club, not conducted as a business. And I should not have said nonprofit, that that means something different.
Okay.
The the, it is what is required under the three point, two point one.
Zoning compliance, but not a tax-exempt nonprofit?
That I know of. I can't, I can't attest to attest to that, that's correct.
Barry?
Barry, do you know? I doubt Barry would know. I, you know, whether these clubs, what about the Pool and Racket Club?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm fairly sure the the Needham Pool is is a not-for-profit, yes. The Pool and Racket Club.
Okay, why don't we? Can we hear from Mr. McCarthy, please?
Mr. McCarthy, unmute. All right, can everyone, can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
All right.
You you may, you may, you may be blocking the video. You may have to agree to come on video if you want us to see you.
All right.
At the at the bottom, kind of at the bottom of the Zoom thing, second thing.
Okay, yeah, there we go.
All right, there now we can see you.
Yeah, we've got my wife Catherine here as well. And just, just so everyone on the call knows, our proximity, we're we're the closest to butter. The courts are going to be literally right outside our back windows of our of our home. You know, and Catherine and myself are both lifelong residents of Needham, as were our parents. We've gone to the Pool and Racket Club as kids. And they're they're great neighbors. And in its current use, we really like the current setup. I am concerned about the expansion. And what I'll do is I'll I'll read the letter that that I sent and I'll and I'll amend it a little bit based on the meeting that I attended at the Pool and Racket Club Tuesday evening. So.
Well, we've also, we've all read your letter.
Oh, okay. All right, great. All right, great.
But but so maybe you could hit the high points of of what troubles you.
All right. First bathrooms. It, you know, this composting system is it sounds very similar to an outhouse. And there's going to be odors. And the plans that I reviewed really didn't have any details. My preference would be to see an upgrade to year-round water tying into the existing septic system or even a well so that, you know, that conventional bathrooms could be used on site. Even tying into a a septic system or a second second septic system installed. It just, you know, the the odor worries me. What also worries me is when that composting system, you know, becomes less desirable after years of use. People start using the woods the way they do with outhouses. And it's literally right outside my windows. And, you know, I have a, I have an eleven-year-old here and just any assurance that, you know, that there's not going to be people using the woods, which will not have foliage in the months that this is in operation. That that's my first concern.
It will be dark. Well, it will, it is, it will be. It's October to April, it's going to be dark.
Well, they get, they get it lit up and it does start.
And it is a football field away from your house.
Yeah, the my my second concern is, yeah, the the quality of life. I mean, this is, they're proposing this going on till eleven, eleven at night, year-round now. You know, regardless of the studies on noise and what manufacturers say, you know, I hear everything at the pool right now. I can hear everything everyone says in that pool. I can see the lights. Every time someone goes off the diving board, I I know it. And, you know, and like I said, it, you know, I I knew I was in for that when I when I bought the house. I knew what I signed up for, but, you know, now we're going to go year-round and we're going to go to eleven o'clock. Eleven o'clock is when the courts close. The problem is, by the time they pack their equipment up, get in their cars, you're going to hear car doors slamming. You're going to hear cars starting, you're going to see the headlights on the cars. We now, I I didn't realize the the alcohol policy. You know, I've played hockey, my wife has played softball. These are social sports and people have a tendency to socialize after the sport. So if play stops at eleven, it's not unrealistic that they're going to, you know, have their alcohol and they're going to socialize, you know, till midnight. And again.
Well, we we could, we could write a condition that says they have to vacate the property by a certain time.
Yeah, well.
That's eleven or earlier.
Yeah, my my preference, my preference would be, you know, nine o'clock, you know, consistent with what is going on at the club. I don't see why, you know, from eight in the morning till nine at night at the latest, especially year-round, seven days a week. You know, it seems like they'd be able to get their league play in and, you know, that would be a, that would be a, you know, a compromise. Another issue is the basketball court or, I mean, the location. You know, the location they have is 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 pretty good. I think it could be better if they put the paddle tennis where their current basketball court is. They have a wall that they, you know, hit, they hit tennis balls off of. I think that would be a much better location. It would require less damage to the, you know, the trees and the buffer zone around the wetlands. But more importantly, it would put it further from all of the the residences and the houses and the neighbors. I just think that that would be a much better location. And then they could possibly consider putting the basketball court, relocating that to the proposed side of these these paddleboard courts. Because I I I went and observed play. It's a very aggressive sport. It's very loud. There's spectators, there's thirty-six people. We're going from, you know, a tennis and swimming club, a community pool. And this is going to become something that's more of a commercial sports complex, more on the level of a baseball field. I mean, there isn't even thirty-six people out on a softball field at night. And, you know, it it's, it's going to definitely impact the quality of my life in my house. You know, I am going to hear it until the last person leaves there. And then.
You you do, you do recognize this is the winter when your house is going to be closed up.
It's, you're you're still going to, you're still going to hear, you know, cars starting, car doors slamming. You know, it like. Yeah, it's a very aggressive sport. The aluminum decking, it's very loud. It's, you know, it's like people dancing on a stage. I mean, it's, there's a lot of echoing. It's you know, it's gonna be heard regardless of whether the windows are open or closed. And most important, and I guess my biggest concern is the impact on the property value. You know, it's, you know, it's one of those things that it is gonna absolutely positively have an impact on our property value. And I'm not sure how that could be addressed, but, and, you know, if if there's a question about that, I mean, you just need to look at the two properties that are for sale next to the new DPW garage. They're, you know, despite a very hot real estate market where properties are selling quickly and above asking price, the two properties bordering the new DPW building, they can't sell. They've had repeated price decreases. They've been on the market for a long time. And, you know, it's hard to not conclude that that's because people just don't wanna be beside things that are noisy, that are lit up at night. And, you know, I honestly think the same is gonna be true with paddle tennis courts in a very close proximity to my home.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Okay, so is there some, another neighbor here that wants to be heard?
Yes, there's Seth Schulman and there's three additional people on cue to speak.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Seth Schulman. I live on Star Ridge and my property abuts the Needham Pool and Racket Club driveway. I'd like to say that I have a lot of friends and neighbors that are members of the club, they're active members of the club. And I'm a relatively new resident. I've moved in a little bit less than a year ago. But everything that I've heard is that the Needham Pool and Racket Club has been a great neighbor to everyone involved. And I think in that spirit, I have to say that I'm not against the proposal, but I'm not supportive of it in its current form either. I appreciate hearing the concerns that Mr. McCarthy voiced. Mine may be a little bit more narrowly focused, but are not dissimilar. My biggest concern is surrounding noise. Now, while there have been many experts that have talked about noise and I don't wanna falsely accuse them harshly. If you do a quick search on YouTube for paddle tennis, it is actually pretty loud. And given that my property abuts the driveway and a tennis court, I can tell you, even during the summer, when I'm indoors with my air conditioning going, I can hear the tennis courts. And these paddle tennis courts are much louder. I also have young children, much younger than Mr. McCarthy's children. And I know that a bunch of my neighbors feel the same way. We've discussed it over the past couple of days. I'm not saying you should say no to this proposal. I do think that there should be some considerations to the neighbors that I think are reasonable. And I do have some thoughts on that. I do think also that the materials that I've been able to read, while I think they are factually accurate, I don't think they accurately represent the reality of the situation. For example, in some of the questions, it talks about noise, which is my primary concern. Where it talks about noise is mitigated by the existing abundant vegetation. Okay? Have you walked through those woods? They are very thin. There is no evergreens there at all. So during the winter, when the sport is being played, there is zero noise mitigation via, you know, the existing shrubbery, the existing vegetation. And I hear the tennis courts. I do think there are reasonable solutions that are in the light of being good neighbors for everyone involved, which I think is everybody's goal here. Okay? I would propose that, one, that there is more particularly evergreen vegetation added along all of the sides that abut neighbors, so that during the wintertime, there is more noiseproofing. I also think there should be a consideration, and I'll speak from the Star Ridge side. I'm sorry, Mr. McCarthy, I don't wanna leave you out, but I think your need should be included in the same concept. That there probably should be appropriate fencing, in my mind, on the Star Ridge side of the Needham driveway, the Needham Pool and Racket Club driveway, probably pretty high, 12 to 15 feet. And I would propose that the Star Ridge residents have approval authority over the aesthetic and design of that. I think that is reasonable to help mitigate noise and light. But I think that there's a balance here. There's a need for everybody. I personally am not a big sports person. It doesn't mean I don't think other people should be big sports people and should enjoy those activities. I think they should. But I think that as a community, we should be working together to make sure that the balance is appropriate for all of the parties involved and that no benefit is given more heavily to one side than the other. And I think that these things are reasonable. Like Mr. McCarthy, I just moved in here last September. I am very concerned about noise, less so about light personally. But I'm very concerned about my property values going down when I recently purchased because of this, when there are easy mitigations that can be put in place to protect them. And I think the board should really, very seriously consider that there are multiple parties involved here. And I think we all have the same goal. We may not always express it that way, because there are a lot of emotions, there's a lot of passion. But I think that there is a way to move forward where all parties can benefit and can be treated fairly, so that the whole can be treated as a good.
All right, got it. Thank you.
We have three additional members of the public. And I'm going to add Mr. Eric Sockle to join. I'm gonna promote him to panelist. Mr. Schulman, what is your address? If they could all mention what their addresses are, please.
Yeah, sorry, I'm located at 18 Star Ridge.
Thank you.
Sorry, one last comment is, my primary concern is that after this meeting, that we as residents that are impacted by this change, that we would have no recourse if the claims that are being made by, sorry, I know it's not the Pool and Racket Club, but it's this other company. If they're not true, then we have no recourse later on to correct things so that everybody can be made whole and appropriately. Sorry, thank you.
Eric Sockle is a panelist.
Sure. Am I on right now?
You are, we can see you.
Sure, hey. Thanks for letting me just pass on a few comments and I think it's great to have these type of discussions. I live at 324 Country Way. I have lived in Needham consecutively for 53 years. And I was a member of the Needham Pool and Racket Club for 37 years. Five or six years ago, I was, actually, when I was a member of the Needham Pool and Racket Club, the opportunity to bring paddle courts to the club was presented because the Brookline Paddle Club, which Barry had mentioned, was looking for a new home and they were gonna relocate to the Needham Pool and Racket Club. That didn't happen from a timing standpoint, but I attended a lot of meetings. And I was able to get exposed to Brookline Paddle and then became a member. I'm an avid tennis player. Nine times a week. Paddle game, love the game because of the, you can maximize the experience in the wintertime when it's tough to find sports. What I wanted to express is, as someone who is a huge fan of the town of Needham, very committed to the town of Needham, Needham is a great community because it has tremendous resources, you know, the Rosemary Pool, the library, there's so many resources. Even the courts near the high school is a great resource and so is the private club, the Needham Pool and Racket Club. And I just wanted to express that if the town, if Needham paddle club can become an existence would be a really wonderful resource for people that are either currently in the sport or have the opportunity to participate in the sport. It's incredibly just fun from a competitive standpoint, from a social standpoint, from a physical fitness standpoint. And again, it takes place in the wintertime where you really have a tough time finding a quality activity like paddle. And as was expressed earlier, it's a sport that it's generally played, high, high percentage played by professionals. It's something after work. It's not a younger person's sport, if you will. You're dealing with professional people. I think as Mr. Schulman, if that was his name, you know, if there are issues, I think they can be resolved through evergreens and things like that. But I just wanted to express to the zoning board, as a resident, someone who does play paddle, I would find this a tremendous resource for town members to partake in. There's gonna be 150 members, so it's, you know, it gives people the opportunity, just like the Needham Pool and Racket Club existing since 1961, 62, gave people an opportunity. So that's, I just wanted to share as a person who plays paddle, a normal sport.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an additional, I'm gonna promote Laura, and if Laura could give me her name and her address as well.
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you were asking for. My name's Laura D'Amelio. I live on 237 Marked Tree Road. And I am the current treasurer of the Needham Pool and Racket Club. And I'm also a longtime member, a resident of Needham. And it was my entire life, but I won't tell you my age. And I just, I think it's a great opportunity to, again, increase the infrastructure of Needham and have something offered to the town in terms of offering paddle tennis. I'm not currently a player. I don't think that I'll actually ever play because it's the wrong time of year for me, but I hope that we have consideration for this opportunity.
Thank you. We have someone else?
We have a Dennis Pendleton Pennington. I'm going to go ahead and promote him to a panelist.
Yes, my name is Dennis Pennington. I'm trying to start video here. I'm calling to represent my parents who live at 50 and 74 Central Ave. They don't have Zoom, but they wanted to have their voice opinioned. They are dead set against the paddle tennis. They live diagonally across the street from the Pool and Racket Club. And as you've heard from a couple of the other residents around the area, yes, you can hear the tennis, let alone paddle tennis, played on aluminum with gravel on top to support the noise level, as we heard. There is no way that that is not gonna be a noisy situation. It's adding to the traffic, especially late at night. My parents are citizens. It will affect their sleep. They are very concerned about property value. This is creating a tremendous amount of stress, which should be the health department's concern as well. I'd also like to hear from Kevin, why other paddle tennis courts are losing their courts. He brought that up. And we also heard of other courts that are closing. So is it the noise? I'd rather think it is. You know, my parents' vote is no. They voiced their opinion at the Pool and Racket Club on Tuesday night. And I'd also add that the notice to visit them at the Pool and Racket Club was put into their mailbox, not via stamp, but put into their mailbox, which I believe is a federal offense.
Let me take the first set of questions. So.
Do we lose Mr. Pennington or is he still here?
No, I'm still here. But that's my first round. My parents have experience with paddle tennis. So my mother was an avid tennis player, loves tennis, knew when she moved into the community that they were moving in across from the Pool and Racket. I grew up in the town of Needham. They've been residents of the town of Needham for a long, long time. We just, I am personally distraught over the issue. We're avid sports fans. We believe in all of that, but the noise level's going to 11 o'clock at night. They can hear it in the summertime. They knew they were moving into that condition, but moving in a winter and having that noise across the street would be untenable. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The first question you asked about why the sports club, Barry, why they lock their leases, people have leases and real estate changes hands. I can't speak to that, but what I can speak to is the flip side and Chris can talk about this. I think he said his company alone has built over 6,000, if I remember the number, courts. So these issues like this, we're talking about an N of one, but it's happening in his company alone, 6,000 times over. And I'd like to talk to Chris and have him be candid and, you know, have there been issues where they've installed courts in and around areas and neighborhoods and have there been feedback?
Sure. Paddle is on an upswing, has been for the last five or six years. Typically, there has been growth in regions. You know, Chicago was really hot, then would be Philadelphia.
I mean, paddle is growing around here. It's a popular, growing sport. I mean, you don't have to convince us of that.
Okay, and it's not just in Boston. It is, so now the growth has been more consistently uniform throughout the country. I, you know, I'm unaware of any clubs going out of business. You know, I understand what happened with the truck stop courts and it wasn't, you know, from a lack of people wanting to play and it wasn't from noise. And I think, you know, Barry can speak to the exact cause, but you know, I can, you know, sit here, you know, under oath and attest that if I'm standing inside a warming hut, which is eight feet away. that if I'm standing inside a warming hut, which is eight feet away from a court and I'm watching a match, I cannot hear it often. You know, so there are some times where, you know, a person's going to be, you know, yelling in exuberance from a point, I can hear that. But I can't hear the actual playing of, of the game. And yes, the court is made out of aluminum. But this has, they've been around for, since the seventies, all over Boston, in fact. And it's something that you don't hear as an issue.
Well, you bring up a good point as well. Because we're not just talking about paddle tennis courts. We're also talking about a spectator stand. And that hasn't come up once tonight. But the spectators are going to make noise. That is, that's what happens when you have spectators at a sport.
I think it was a mischaracterization to say that there's a stand. And as it is now, we're just having decking. There's no stands contemplated, at least from our perspective.
Well, I think my parents heard on Tuesday night that there was plans for a spectator stand and that there would be tournaments or regional tournaments, as were stated. So I believe there are plans for a spectator stand.
No, there's no plans for spectators. There's no plans or any future planning for stands. There's only Mr. Crow, Tony Crow spoke wrongly of that. There's just a spectator deck, a little deck area right outside the paddle hut, where people can stand while they're waiting and watch. There's no golf, you know, no, no football stadium type stands going up or anything like that.
So people will bring their folding chairs and sit and watch.
They could sit on patio, they could sit on patio furniture, it's a place to socialize.
There are still going to be spectators.
You're still talking about sound issues. If you look at a basic decibel chart, 100 decibels is a loud noise. By the time it gets down to 60, which I believe is 60, 60 decibels, which is moderate to quiet noise, it's gone 210 feet. So if anybody's within 210 feet, it gets down to a mild to moderate noise, which everybody's past that 300, 400 feet away, which the noise would be nothing by the time it gets out that far.
Well, I have visited. Yeah. I have visited my parents' house and witnessed the noise from the Pool and Racket Club. Again, we're not complaining about the existing. They knew that when they moved in. But this will be louder.
I beg to defer, I think the pool is 10 times louder than paddle facility. I can attest to that on a daily basis. When you have kids jumping in and out of the pool yelling, they're just, it's 10 times louder than the existing paddle facility.
Okay, I think, I think we should move on. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard?
There's Enrique Beidido, he's next. He's a panelist. And we have another one, Andrea Schuman afterwards.
I want to speak, one second, Mr. Chairman, just on the point. The application clearly asked for viewing stands. So is there a desire to remove that from the application?
That can't get removed, John, it's my crow. I thought they were putting viewing stands, it's not viewing stands. The plans don't call for viewing stands. They do call for that aluminum platform outside of the, Chris again can explain it, but it's in the plans, as is set out in the plans, is what we're asking for, it's not a viewing stand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Belido.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Enrique Belido. I am a resident of 66 Grant Street in Needham. Been here for the better part of 30 years. In the past, I have been a member of the Needham Pool and Racket Club. I am no longer. But I, about three years or so ago, I started playing paddle at the Brookline Club that Barry mentioned. And I'm an architect by training, been in the business for a long time, had an opportunity to view the materials presented to the board. And I have not been involved in the planning of the club. But I'd like to say that it seems as though the committee has put a very thoughtful proposal forward. They've been very considerate of the concerns that the neighborhood might have. And knowing Barry and the rest of the team, I understand they will continue to address their concerns. I would like to voice my support for the proposal. I think it's a wonderful expansion of what the Needham Pool and Racket Club currently offers. The town of Needham, it's very consistent with a mission. It's a family oriented use. It allows us to perform a sport in a time when we usually are stuck watching our televisions in the winters. So it gets us out of the house, away from our computers and away from our phones. And it gets us back outside, trying to be healthy. And that's what it's all about. So I just would like to offer my support for the proposal.
Thank you. And who's next? Schulman?
I think it's my turn.
Yes.
Hi, we're residents of 36 Star Ridge Road. And I would like to echo what Seth Schulman was saying earlier. I want, we've been here for a while. My husband's a Needham resident, he's born and raised. And I grew up playing tennis, you know, starting at three. So I'm a very big fan, I'm a very big fan of tennis. But we knew what we signed up for. And I'm very concerned over that this is going to extend into the winter part of the year. I'm concerned about the noise levels. You can get all the experts on here that insist that it's not going to be that loud. But we can hear the swimming and the tennis playing as it is now. So we're in distress a little bit. We're wondering what the middle, what compromises there can be. Because we have a three, she's almost four. 11:00 PM just seems way too late, seven days a week, all year round. I mean, that's just not what we signed up for. And this is going to be different. I mean, it's not that we want to be neighborly. I don't want to be the joy kill. But I would like some modifications to the existing proposal. You know, we, I loved Seth's idea of a fence. I like the evergreens. When the, when the leaves, when the foliage is down in the winter, we can see everything. We can see everybody driving back and forth. We can, we can, and we can hear the happiness. I mean, I'm sure it's a lot of fun going on over there. But I, we don't want to be part of a party all year round, 24/7, or till 11:00 PM every night. That is not what we signed up for. I'm just hoping that, I'm hoping that you'll, you'll hear, you'll hear us. I don't, I mean, I can, I can reiterate everything that I've been listening to, but most of the things I wanted to say have been said. You know, I think this is, the sounds are wonderful. It would be wonderful if it wasn't in my backyard.
Okay.
Andrea, what is your address, please?
36 Star Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Mark Savnor. I've lived in Needham for about 55 years. I moved to this house about 12 years ago. And I knew what I signed up for, the, you know, the racket and tennis club. All my friends have gone there as kids, you know, and we all went there as kids. And, you know, it's, it's a racket and tennis club. But I had no idea they wanted to explode into this thing all winter long until 11 o'clock with lights. And, you know, people yelling, screaming, you know, if someone does a good hit, of course, someone's going to clap. I mean, if it goes to 11 o'clock, it's right in my backyard. And it's right in Mr. McCarthy's backyard. But, you know, I, I understand that they have built these. And someone had mentioned the, what is it, the Dedham Racket? Dedham Racket and Tennis Club? That court's inside, that doesn't have people's backyards right against it. And they mentioned.
Brookline.
Brookline, Wellsley Country Club in Newton. But this, they're not in anybody's backyard until 11 o'clock with lights. People are drinking, you know, people are getting in their cars after. There's, there's a lot of variables to, you know, drinking and loud noise and people and lights till 11 o'clock. So, you know, I would love to see some changes to this where we could still keep the quality of life in our house. When, when I sit outside now, I can hear the tennis ball on a Sunday morning. I can hear the tennis ball all day long, but.
But you're not, you're not going to be sitting outside between October and.
Hold on, we had a warm winter. I was outside, I go outside, I do yard work, I sit on my porch. How do you know I don't sit outside? I mean, the president, the president of the, of this, of the, 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 one of, you know, the president, the racket club, the, the president, past president, Barry. He loves the sport. I know other people love the sport. But he lives, he lives a couple of miles away. So when he gets in his car, oh, he lives a little, he lives a little bit away.
Around the corner.
Around the corner. But when he gets in his car and goes home and there's people still here, he doesn't have to listen to them hit the ball back and forth, jumping down on that thing. And the other gentleman said that, "We're not going to hear anything." I mean, come on, come in my backyard, you can hear whatever you want all night long. And I don't want to listen to it till 11 o'clock at night. I don't know if you would like that in your backyard, or if you would like to listen to it till 11 o'clock either. But I don't. So there's going to be a lot done to this, to make me happy with it, to, to say yes. You know, and I just would love people to, you know, maybe put one of these in their backyard and then let, you know, and then let them vote on it. So, you know, I just would like to say that I would love to probably see some provisions here. And the hours definitely have to be changed. Seven, seven days a week, Sunday till 11 o'clock, that's crazy. Saturday till 11 o'clock? Whenever I want to sit in my backyard, I got to listen to that? It just doesn't make sense.
What happens if kids can't sleep? I mean, that's my concern, it's really, it's just, I, can we compromise? 9:00 PM seems more reasonable. I mean, I don't want it really at all because it's in my backyard. But if we're going to be stuck with it, if we're going to try and compromise, I think we need to be reasonable. I don't think 11:00 PM is reasonable. I don't even think it's close to reasonable. I, I have to, you know, I would just like some, try to picture this in your backyard.
And I think everyone that came on here tonight and that was for it, doesn't live in the vicinity of this. They live away from here on Mark Tree, the treasurer, Country Way. Somebody else was a member, he lived at another vicinity. It's, it's not in their backyard. This is a tennis club in a pool club that we signed up for. We didn't sign up till 11 o'clock at night. We knew it wasn't going to be till 11 o'clock at night. And we don't want it to be till 11 o'clock at night.
Can I also say one more thing about the alcohol? Because I think that's going to open up a can of worms. It's, I understand, I think it's wonderful that they've been doing a great job managing their BYOB situation. But this is going to expand it if it goes to 11. I mean, we just took a walk just out of curiosity. There's a lot of litter. I think when people leave, they just throw their trash out the window. That's why I suggested the fence. And I know Seth suggested the fence. I, I mean, I just, I don't know, can we consider a police detail? I mean, it's just, it's alcohol.
With alcohol and 36 people talking out there till 11 at night, hitting the ball, screaming and yelling, "Nice hit," oh, you know, "Oh, you missed that," or, you know, what have you, as you drink in alcohols. And if you didn't even drink anyways, it would be loud. It's going to be loud. I mean, people outside till 11 o'clock at night? This isn't Boston. This is Needham, Massachusetts, where the town shuts down at 8 o'clock, not 11 o'clock. To me, I think it's completely wrong. I'm all for the tennis club, I love it, they've been great neighbors, they've, they've been everything I want. But this, I think, has gone a little too far.
It's a different animal. I mean, we can't.
We got it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, who's next?
Michael Q. Hello, yes, I'm using my husband's laptop, so it shows his name. My name is Jenny. We live on 48 Star Ridge. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I totally concur with my neighbors, Sess and Mark and my neighbors. We, along, I'm concerned about the traffic, the lights, I told my neighbors, the traffic. When people come now in the summertime, all the trees with leaves give us a protection, a shield. It's nice, we don't see much. But once the leaves fall, really, I do see all the, the cars, in our police cars, in and out. And also, people using the tennis court, they don't use the designated parking lot. They actually park alongside the driveway too. So that needs to be changed. If, imagine if they building more, the three, adding three new courts, and in the wintertime till 11 o'clock, it's really not very considerate for the neighbors. We're, we're too close. Right now, the swimming pool and the tennis, it's fun. I know it's okay for the summertime. But for the winter till 11, we all work at night and we need to see all those lights and people traffic. I think that the club needs to do something more to complete their design. If the, first of all, it's to 11 o'clock is too late. Second, if they have to do something, then adding more protection, soundproof, more evergreen and fence, to, to be considerate. And the noise till 11, we don't, we didn't sign up for in the wintertime till 11 o'clock for, for commerce, it's more like a club, it's a commercial use in our backyard. I hope the board can take that into consideration. And thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, we have Fred. Going to promote him to a panelist. Fred, please give me your, please give us your last name and your address.
We just.
Yeah, he just, Fred, you are now panelist. Please unmute.
I did? Can you hear me now?
What is your last name and your address, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and see you.
Okay, Afny, thank you so much for sending the, all the materials over to me so promptly, when I requested them a while back. I didn't hear my name called earlier, so I didn't know I was on the schedule. So I'm frantically sitting here waiting to be called. I live at 1554 Central Avenue, directly across the street from the driveway to the Pool and Racket Club. Pool and Racket Club has been a wonderful neighbor for years. I have had nothing but good things to say about the way it's been operated, the way it's been run. It hasn't been a traffic problem. It hasn't been a noise problem, even though I can hear tennis balls playing and kids in the pool from time to time. But it really hasn't been an issue. They've been good neighbors. And I understand, I grew up in the town, have been there since the club was formed and so forth. And my wife and I never even considered it, never thought about it much. But I do understand that it was, it's a club basically for Needham people, Needham residents, and a sports, family oriented facility. This new proposal to me reeks of commercialism. I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions about why we need a new LLC, why we need a separate corporation if the Pool and Racket Club is the applicant for the variance. I think we need to explore the financial relationship between the new Pool and Racket Club and its business purpose. And its, its purpose going forward and the club. If the, the club, the new club is going to operate under the auspices and the supervision of the Pool and Racket Club, who is responsible? If the paddle club is, does not conform to the promises that they've made about this and that and so forth and so on.
The, the answer to that is, is if somebody complains to the building inspector, he will enforce the provisions of a special permit we write.
The building inspector isn't gonna come out here at eleven o'clock at night to, to, or twelve o'clock at night to shut down a party that's going on until twelve. That, that's, that's, that's.
They'll send the police.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John. That's, that's Mr. Schneider, I'm sorry. That, that really doesn't make sense. I have no concerns with the conservation, uh, problem of the conservation issue. I have no concerns with the building issues. You've had the engineering company testify as to the way that they're gonna be built, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, we failed to mention, although the lights are only twenty feet high, they're gonna be twenty feet higher than the high end of the courts, which might put them at twenty-five feet, eight or thirty feet. That's okay, I'm sure the lighting can be contained pretty much and directed down. My concern is that we're, this smacks of a commercial entity, three paddle courts this year, six paddle courts next year, all to help sustain the Needham Pool and Racket Club be, through a large lease, because the pool racket club, uh, could use a lot of updating, has significant financial problems, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The new paddle club is not designed for Needham residents. The new paddle club is designed by people who are avidly into this sport and who play in league all around Massachusetts. They even advertise what an exciting thing it is for all the people from Metro West. If you look at, uh, Mr. Nectile's affiliations, he's with the Boston Pool and Racket Club, or whatever, whatever, Paddle Tennis Club. And the membership play is, I've, I've reviewed their standard, who, the membership is Wellesley people, Western people, Framingham people, Cambridge people. It's a league. And if it was truly something for the people of Needham and a benefit to the people of Needham, that's a different story. Yeah, it should be centered in Defazio Field. If it's not a noise problem and it's not a light problem, put it in the Defazio Field, put it, put it in Needham High School. Uh, put it somewhere else. But no, it's a commercial thing, and yes, I, I, I think it's a great sport. People get excited, they run around, they yell, they scream, they hit the ball. But don't for a minute, anyone think that it's not, that it's akin to tennis in terms of its, um, acoustics. The balls are pressurized, or they're harder than tennis balls. It's played with a solid racket, not a strong racket. And it bounces off the walls like squash and people yell and they scream, and it's always doubles. There's always four peoples on a court at a time, at a time. And it's extremely loud. I liken it to, uh, firecrackers going off, back, 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 or gunshots. And for anyone who doubts my veracity, I ask them to go to, over to Dedham, or go to Wellesley, or go to, go anywhere where there's an outside court, stand outside for a while and listen to what goes on. It can be heard from, for one long distance, not five hundred feet, not seven hundred feet. Uh, considerably, considerably further than that. I've, I've been in a parking lot across, parked at Babson's and listened to what, uh, went on at the Wellesley Club. So, for all those reasons, I, I have to object vehemently, uh, to this, uh, proposal, without some addressing that issue. Uh, if it's not, if we're gonna put a commercial entity in there for the benefit of people from Metro West, and they're gonna be across from my house, so be it. But don't make me listen to it. If other people are profiting, if other people are profiting from it, and it's, it's great, you know, Pool and Racket Club, Needham people, for Needham sports, but no, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a commercial entity stuck across from my house, uh, hosting people from all over the great Boston area till eleven o'clock at night or twelve o'clock after the party's over. And for those of us, uh, Mr. Cass, Sir Reggie, uh, Mr. Nectile the other night, who alleged that the noise factor is similar to tennis. I'm sorry, gentlemen, with all due respect, that's totally disingenuous. I encourage any of you who have never heard or seen this sport to go on to, online, Google noise factor in paddle tennis or paddle, whatever it's called, there's several different iterations of the name. But it's extremely loud and there are, uh, there are mitigations for that. There are acoustic fences that can be put up, acoustic walls, it could be inside. There are other, there are other ways it could be done. But the noise factor is, uh, very troublesome to me. And that's, that's about all.
Thank you.
Could I have your last name and your address, please?
Daphne, my last name is Sewell, S.E.W.A.L.L. My address is fifteen fifty-four Central Avenue, pardon me.
Thank you, for the record. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. And.
And thank you for your promise, and thank you for your promise in sending out the package.
Your will.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Um, we have no other hands raised, John.
Well, all right, um, here's kinda where I am. It's getting late and we've heard a lot. And I know, I'd like to think about this, I'd like to, um, go back and listen to the paddle tennis over at Wellesley Country Club. Um, so, so, you know, I'm, I'm proposing that we continue this. I'll, I'll, I'll say that I think there, there are really four questions that I kinda have, um, that I'd like you to address when we come back. Uh, the first is, is there any alternative location on the property that would put it further away from, uh, neighbors? Uh, the, the, the second would be, um, is, can we get some kind of noise study that would put this into scientific terms of, um, you know, we do it with generators when they're going into towers. They do a noise study that will prove that you go so many feet away that it's dropped down to a decibel level that you can't hear. Um, the, the third thing is, is, you know, these neighbors, some of them have strongly suggested you think about fencing or trees. And I think you all need to talk about that, maybe talk to that neighbor. Um, and, and finally, um, I think you have to think long and hard about whether you really need until eleven o'clock. Um, I, 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 I do think that this is gonna be an intrusion on the neighborhood if, for nothing else, then cars going in and out and probably noise. And whether you can, this could be viable with fewer hours. And also say that, um, in connection with the lights on the field down to Defazio, which took a lot of time and effort by this board. Uh, we started out with a certain limit and then they came back and the next year after it was in play and asked to extend the hours and we agreed to that. And so, the, the fact that we might, you know, say that you've gotta stop at nine or ten now, doesn't mean you couldn't come back after you're in operation to ask to extend the hours. But I think you all need to consider whether, whether you can live with less than eleven o'clock, because that really is pretty late. Um, the other board members, I invite kind of your comments of, of issues that you think that they, we need to address.
Uh, so, Chairman, um, first of all, I want to, uh, go watch the game, listen to the game, and, uh, some direction. Obviously, I can't join you, Mr. Snyder, or it's a open meeting.
Yes, you can, you stand, stand at the Babson Post Office, which is about the same distance away from the Wellesley Paddle Courts as, as, uh, the house on Central Ave is gonna be here.
Do they play it in the evening as well?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think most of the paddle is in the evening, there's some in the day, but it's mostly the evening.
So unless anybody else on this board plays the game or has not viewed it, I think that's an appropriate thing that we go take a view and go watch the game and listen and observe and understand.
And, 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 and I'll, I'll, I'll take you over to the, to the courts if you want to, although there's not much to see. It's really question of the noise. And, and, and there are also lights at Wellesley or Dedham that you can go and take a look at.
Got it. And the second thing, um, I, I agree to the applicant, uh, really focus in on your hours. Um, we spent a real long time on the, on, on the parks, on Defazio and Memorial, on, uh, dealing with all the neighbors and the butters. Uh, we started it early and observed it for a year and see how it worked out. And I think it's been a great addition to the community and everybody seems to, uh, support it and use it, and it's a great addition. Um, uh, fencing noise, how, how do you address it? Um, one of the concerns I had was eliminated, which was the viewing stand or the bleachers, uh, that is not part of it. Uh, so focus on the hours, meet with the neighbors on both sides, uh, and across the street and talk to them. See if you can come up with some modification that, uh, allows the, uh, the, the residents and community be, to, to support this a little bit more. And, uh, just for the record, so everybody knows, the Pool and Racket Club obviously is a nonprofit organization. So that's the distinction between that. And I'm, I'm interested in knowing why, maybe next time, why the tenant is not a nonprofit. Uh, that means something to me. Uh, I don't know how significant, but it's, it's a distinction. And that's about it, Mr. Chairman.
So the board members?
Uh, John Friedenberg? Yeah. Yeah, I, I certainly think that eleven o'clock is too late. I think particularly when you're talking, you're now talking about a family activity here. You're talking basically about a, a group of adults. And I think with, with any of these leagues, particularly since it's acknowledged that they will be permitting alcohol, uh, the alcohol aspect of it, I think, makes it pretty definite that there will be people staying after the, the games are done. So I, I think we have an issue both as to how long games can go on and how, at what time the place needs to be vacated. Frankly, I, as it gets later in, in the evening, I'm not crazy about permitting alcohol there at all. I don't know, we have the jurisdiction to do that. Uh, I think that the noise study, I think, is, is a great idea. I don't know that we can really get apples to apples doing a noise study now to compare it to what it would be like during the winter when there is no foliage. But I, I think we really need it because intuitively, to me, this sounds like a noisy game. I have, I've played it a long time ago, I've played paddleball, I've played squash. There, there is a lot of yelling and there is, it's, it's a noisy game. I, I think the other thing that, that I, I'm wrestling with is this really is, I think, qualitatively different from the service and the facilities that the, the Pool and Racket Club provide. Not just because that's a summer activity, not just because it closes earlier, but again, I, I think that's a, a family-oriented activity. I think it also is primarily benefiting Needham residents, and I think this is different. I, I'm not so much troubled whether it's commercial or not, because I'm willing to take the applicant at face value that in fact, no one is making money off of this. But it troubles me that I, I don't know that this is necessarily what is, was meant by a similar activity in the, the old sixty-two zoning decision. I'm not sure this is really similar to operating a pool or a tennis court. To me, it, it feels different, and I'd like to think about that. I think that's all I have to say.
Ms. Berardi?
Sure, um, so full disclosure, I am a current NPRC member, um, but I am not voting on this one. I think, John, your four points, um, four questions that you asked, um, are very valid questions. I hear the concerns that the neighbors have, I understand it. And would like to hear more next time, um, to kind of address each one of those concerns and what we can do to, um, you know, mitigate the noise. Um, doesn't sound like the lighting is, is as much of an issue as people had maybe originally thought. Certainly, the hours, um, seem like a large concern to a lot of the butters. So I'd like to hear that to be, um, addressed as well. And also, whether there was any thought about putting this in an alternative location and why this particular location was picked, um, over any others.
Mr. Dampkin?
I have one last comment, uh, and I, I don't know who said it. I would be much more comfortable with the alcohol if there were actually service rather than your own. Just, it would be more controlled, uh, just my thought. If, if the current setup is you bring your own, that's fine during the day, during the summer, I understand it, it's your operation. Uh, it's just a little bit concerned. It, it is similar to hockey and, and, and what people do after work and they go to men's leagues or men's and women's leagues, whatever. And there's a lot of drinking after games. Um, so, that's fine, uh, but maybe not till ten, eleven o'clock all, all year round. So that's a thought, think about those things, try to build a consensus with the butters, and, uh, we'll see you in August.
Yeah, well, 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 thank you. Um, so, so, shall we, we need to set a time that we're gonna do this, shall we say? Do, Daphne, do you have any idea of what we have on for August?
Um, the deadline for applications is the twentieth. I've only heard, um, an ADU, a possible ADU coming in. Um, there is a launch site that's coming in, uh, that on the.
So, so, what about, why don't we say this will be on at eight o'clock? Now it gives us time.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the, the other ones might be.
And, and what's, what's the August date?
The August date is August twentieth. That's Thursday, August twentieth, and we'll put them on for eight PM.
Eight PM and, you know, it'll be, uh, it's gonna be Zoom for a while, so everybody could stay at home. Thank you. Mr. Crowe, do you have any concluding remarks?
No, I, I have a lot of remarks, but I think I'll save it. We'll, we'll, we'll answer all these questions and deal with it August twentieth. I appreciate the board for their patience tonight, and it, it's a complicated and important issue to, to everybody involved. And, uh, I just thank you for your patience, and, uh, we'll meet on the twentieth and see if we can narrow the issues and, and try to get through this. I do appreciate if you go, if you do get a chance to go, uh, you know, view, uh, uh, this activity in, in, in its natural habitat on the street. Um, and I'll look into, you know, the cost and, and timing and relevance of a sound, uh, study, a noise study for this type of project, uh, also and see to what, if anything, we can, we can offer on that. All the other issues, you know, are issues we envisioned, and they're not surprise. But.
I was gonna say, a, a noise study is probably pretty straightforward. Just set up something at the Babson Post Office, uh, across from the Wellesley Paddle Courts. The, the, that's about the same distance, I think.
Exactly, so, you know, we'll look into all that. Everybody get some sleep and thank you for your patience tonight, we'll see you.
Thank you for your presentation.
I would like to ask everybody who's involved in this case to please provide any materials, writings, letters and comments. I would like to put the deadline for, um, August the eleventh. This way, we can get all the comments to the applicant and we can get, uh, all the neighborhood and public comments. So if you could please look, try to keep a deadline, because we're getting so many fast and furious comments after the packets go out to the board. I would really like to, you know, I, I really would appreciate if we all agree to get your comments in, uh, on the eleventh, if you can.
And, and we do have a deadline under our rules anyway, which we won't.
It's forty-eight hours, but.
Michael, good to see you. Thank you.
Good to, John, everybody else, thank you.
One thing in closing, one thing in closing, Mr. Chairman, if you do go to Wellesley, that's an elevated court and it's, and does travel quite a bit more over there. Um, recommend to come over to Dedham, where it's more of a ground-level court, that'd be so, very similar to what's going in deep into Needham.
Would you send it, by the way? Yes, excuse me.
Don't use the man.
Would you send it out to Daphne, how we, okay, get access to the?
It's, it's right off the road, you can come, you can come in anytime. But there's no leaks going on, there's no leaks going on right now, that's the problem. So it's off-season.
All right.
But with Wellesley, it's an elevator, it's gonna, the sound will travel a lot farther in Wellesley.
You tell us where we should go visit and watch and give it to Daphne and she'll tell us that. All right?
All right. I'll give it, I'll get together with Barry and find out where they're playing.
Okay. Thank, thank you. I think we're adjourned? Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.